Okay. That was the quickest transition we've done.
That was very good.
This is the February ninth regular school board meeting, Powhatan County Schools. Let the roll call reflect that all members are present. And at this point, if we could all stand, Mr. Walters will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Lord, we ask you that you be with us tonight to guide our deliberations as we conduct the business publicly of Powhatan County Schools. Please guide us so we may make the best decision for our children, for the staff, for the parents and citizens of Powhatan County. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Before we approve the agenda, do we have any motions for additional agenda items?
May I sign something, Bruce?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we include on the agenda the assignment of a school board member to serve as our representative to the Mass Science Innovation Center.
Okay, we will, we want to put that after the present, after the recognitions.
Sure. Or we can do it as 3B after the, oh, I'm on the wrong meeting. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Let's do it after, after the-
Part of the superintendent's report.
Yeah, as part of the superintendent's report, item E.
6E.
6E. So is there a motion, motion had item 6E, which was a reappointment for the positions that were vacated by Mr. Frame. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Right now, can I have a motion for the approval of the amended agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I got a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And is there any minutes that have to be separated out, or can we approve minutes in mass?
I think they're good.
Nothing? Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the minutes from January 12th, January 20th. That was, that was the regular school board meeting and the joint special meeting with the BOS.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to a review of bills and receipts. Does anybody have any questions about the bill list as they're presented? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. That brings us to our first public comment period. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address the school board and talk about any items about their schools, there's a three-minute time limit for individuals, five minutes per group. If you do approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public comment period. And that brings us to some presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First presentation this evening is the schematic design for our new proposed middle school. Douglas Moreland, Stephen Halsey are back with us to present updated information on schematic design. We will be asking for approval from the board later in the meeting of this design so that the design process can be, can continue and be completed in the next couple of months. Mr. Westmoreland?
Good evening. It's our pleasure to be back with you again tonight to make this hopefully our final schematic design presentation. I might remind the board that there are various phases in a major project like this, schematics, and then we go into design development, which is the more detailed design phase, then we go to construction documents, which is the technical part of putting the package together for the general contractor to bid. So all that will be moving on down the road, but this will not be our final presentation, but our final schematic presentation. So our agenda, we'll talk just briefly about the process that we've done since the last time we were here. And then I'm going to allow Stephen to go through the site plan, floor plan, and building images, and hopefully we've addressed some of the comments that came up in the joint session a week ago, was that a week ago?
A week ago.
And then give you a budget update and talk a little bit about schedule and next steps. We have been through a series, I think we talked about this last time, of user meetings, and we've just concluded the second round of those meetings. And you can see the various user groups that we went through and had detailed meetings with, from administration to PE and science and art and media center. It's interesting, as we went through that day of, of meetings, there were some areas that we nailed and some that we were still doing soft pencil. So we've got a third round to, we're moving some things around in the art room and some things in the media center, all of which is good. It's just very good ideas coming to the table. And as we've said all along, this has been a very collaborative process, and we're all very happy where we are with that. So we will have a round three to go back to those areas that we're still a little bit in flux and make sure that we get everything accommodated. So Stephen?
Thank you, Doug. A lot of this information will be what we showed a couple of weeks ago at the joint board meeting, but I did want to, we'll go through site plans first and then floor plans and then some building images that I think will be somewhat repetitive, but for those in the audience, they might have a chance to see some of the building images that we've been showing throughout the design process. I've had some comments from the board at the last meeting about parking, come back with some, we've come back with some more detailed information about parking. Go through a series of slides first. The first slide is the parking that's on-site now between the various slots and some unmarked areas behind the building. Right now, there are about 422 total spaces on asphalt on the, in the existing configuration. And as you can see, there's a considerable amount of asphalt, especially behind the school. We've talked about that before, about part of the redesign and making the flow of the site better, access better, to provide, try and provide similar parking counts while reducing our stormwater load. So some of this information, again, some of the parking counts we showed a couple of weeks ago, but this is some additional information that we wanted to show. There you can see, I think last time, I used a mouse. Last time, we were showing about 110 cars within inbound, inboard of the bus loop, looking at parking additional cars head to toe along the perimeter of the bus loop. For after-hours overflow use, we've got space for about 142 cars. Looking at the other parking spaces combined, we've actually got the same number of spaces in the new project and the reconfigured site as we have now. So about 422 spaces can be provided on asphalt with reduced amounts of asphalt for the new project. So that was some good information for us to discover as well. We also looked at some additional ways to provide some overflow parking, and we'll go through that as well. These, there was some discussion at the last board meeting about maybe some overflow parking with a roll curb, maybe some sort of sustainable pervious horse material. So we've identified, we've had our civil engineer, Timmons, look at some fire lane requirements and trying to provide some areas for overflow parking that would not hinder fire apparatus access to the building in event of emergency. So these are some areas that we've looked at, these areas in red. These are in 10-car chunks, so we can provide, could provide up to another 50 spaces in additional overflow parking. Again, this wouldn't be regular parking, but could be a roll curb with some sustainable horse pavement for a total of 472 spaces on-site if we decided to go that route. Here's an image of one of the potential products. It's a horse pipe that would be included in a series of stone layers that could be seeded with grass. So again, from a distance, it looks just like a grass or lawn area, but would be able to support the weight of a typical truck or vehicle. There is some cost associated with this. It's about $6 a square foot installed. We've got about 9,000 square feet of material between the 50 parking spaces, so somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $60,000 that would have a budget impact by using this material. I would like to back up a little bit as well. There was some discussion too about in the event of an accident occurring in some of these areas that might hinder flow or egress or ingress into the site. We've provided some areas in this gray area here, this gray area there, that could be more of an elevated pavement, either a sidewalk or elevated areas of pavement, that could be some reliever pavement in the event that there is an accident right here at the mouth of this main opening into this parent drop-off loop that would provide some relief at the opposite end of that parking lot, and the same would occur at the elementary school as well. So those were some good thoughts that came out of the last board meeting, and I'm happy to see that we've been able to implement something like that in the site plan. Looking through floor plan, we've, as Doug mentioned, we've been meeting through a series of user meetings. Some really good ideas have come out in the way to improve the media center, way to improve the art area. The main floor plan layout has really remained unchanged. Again, all the public areas aligned along this main corridor here with the gymnasium, dining room, media center, all those functions could have an after-hours use. We've talked about, again, in previous meetings about adding some gates in this location and in this location here to separate those areas from the building, again, with two large banks of toilets that could provide restroom access for public in those areas during after-hours use. Again, the upstairs has really remained unchanged, a block of science rooms, the main organizations remain unchanged, a sixth grade pod located downstairs, seventh grade pod upstairs and downstairs around the stair, and in the balance of the eighth grade upstairs as well. One thing discussed at the last board meeting, and has been discussed as we've gone through user meetings with the, with users of the school, was there was some question about gymnasium capacity access. We started the project with about, well, one in terms of trying to reclaim and being thoughtful about how we reuse this large high school gym for a middle school, a proper middle school. We've been working kind of concurrently with locker room layouts and providing regulation-sized high school basketball court, 50 by 84, and trying to find that right mix of seating capacity. We started the project with about 300 seats provided, which is a very typical new middle school seating capacity around the state. Throughout this process of kind of moving and pushing and tugging things, we have been able to provide some additional seating throughout the user group process for a seating capacity of up to 450 seats within the gymnasium. Another thing to notice that's, that's come out of the user meetings is we've started to look at a space for concessions and for a work area for PTO, parent groups, located, again, inboard of the public area. So again, if there's an event that's happening, either in a performance event in the dining room or sporting event in the high school, we've got an area here for some, some light concessions, which I think is a good idea to add to the project as well. Another thing we've started looking at too, we had some space programmed in the, in the project for a multimedia lab as part of the media center. And one thing that came up is throughout the user group and design process was we've got lots of STEM kind of spaces already built into the, into the program, and also some opportunities already within the media center for maker spaces and multimedia space. So one discussion that came out of the user groups was maybe this multimedia lab might be a little bit repetitive and might there be an opportunity to repurpose that space and locate it somewhere else within the building. On the public side, there might be an overflow health room, there might be a dedicated community room, or a room that could be used by the community after hours. So going back to the floor plan, in previous floor plans, this, this space was located, where's my mouse, inboard back in this area, and we started to shift that space forward into more prominent public location and just shifted the media center spaces down. So again, located in this area, so again, that has good access to the public for PTO meetings after hours, for teacher groups after hours, for any other public use after hours. So I think that's been a good improvement to the plan as this has been going on throughout the design process.
And just, Mr. Halsey, just to, one of the things we heard from the PE teachers was the need to have a health classroom and a large health classroom to, excuse me, during the school day, that could also serve as a health classroom for those PE classes as well. So I think it is a much better use of space, and we know there's lots of community groups that are always looking for spaces to meet. This would be one that would be very convenient and accessible for various groups to have a nice meeting room space that could accommodate up to 75 and maybe even 100 people.
Right. It's a, it's a nice size space, somewhere in the 900 to 1,000 square feet, like Dr. Jones mentioned, is really good proximity right across the hall, the main hallway from the gymnasium. So again, that's really good adjacent access for PE teachers for, for health classroom purposes. We'll go through some images. Again, we showed this, this movie animation last time, but for those who might not be able to attend, we'll play it again too. It's a, it's something that has generated a lot of excitement not only within our office, but I think within other areas where we've, we've presented this. It just shows a little animation about the scope of the project. Identifying in red the areas that will be demolished. Maintaining the existing gym and the existing vocational wing, and those will be thoroughly rehabilitated throughout the project. Next time, we'll come back with some music, something to add some audio to it. Just a few notes about materials as we're watching this. I think I'd mentioned last time, we're trying to take some clues from images, from tones and specks of color in the existing skin of the gymnasium and the vocational wing, the kind of play of those. So we're starting to look at some, some brick materials, some other mason materials that are really complementary and compatible with some of the skin that will remain on the, on the project. So the idea is really to leave as if it looks like a brand-new middle school, even though we'll be retaining some portions of the existing school. Image inside the courtyard, the media center on the left. Looking straight through to the main entrance, so there'll be a nice visual connection as you enter the, enter the, enter the school into the courtyard, and that's looking back into the media center. Looking at ways to provide some outdoor dining areas and some outdoor instructional areas within the, within the media center as well, or the courtyard. We'll just go through these as well. Image at the front door, good visibility. We've talked about passive security and the, the need to have lots of glass here from the main entrance and the admin looking out, so there's a really good visual surveillance of those that are coming and going into the school, especially after the school instructional day has begun. Images of the media center. Again, I mentioned before the need for some maker spaces and lots of casual and comfortable seating for students to work together in small groups or individually. We talked a little bit about the collaborative areas before. I mentioned before some, a couple of trains of thought, progressing through K-12 education and is there a way to activate corridors for some extended learning areas? Or do you want to have some of those areas confined? And part of the user group process we've gone through is that we've decided that we really want some collaborative areas in some of these areas, some, some of these sort of nooks and crannies and corridors, but they do need to be somewhat contained for noise, and again, to provide a proper instructional area, but have lots of glass, so there's lots of, lots of visibility and supervision of students and educational activities that are going on within those areas. I think we talked about, again, about the gym as well. Complete refurbishment of the gym, new floor, new bleachers, new backboards, backboard apparatus, everything. So we'll leave that with, this is a brand-new facility. So with that, I'll turn that back over to Doug.
Okay, just real briefly.
Before we get into this, are there any questions on those images or the design?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have one or two questions. And if I could thank you, I asked you the two topics that you discussed, and I appreciate you addressing the issue of the ingress and egress to those two parking lots. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. If I could draw you back to this slide that you have about the number of parking spaces in the new proposed layout for that. So in this handout that we were given last time, that parking area behind the new renovated junior high complex, in what we were given the last time lists 110 spaces after hours. And it appears to be functionally the same as it appears up there, but you're now at 142.
Yeah, what we're-
So help me, help me to understand how you got from 110 to 142 again.
We were, we were parking back-to-back in this middle bay, and that was the only car parking that was counted in that 100. So we can't park head to toe along here because it's a fire lane, but we can park head to toe from here all the way back through to here.
Okay.
So when you add those spaces in, you get to 142 spaces. So we were, we did not count any head-to-head parking, and there's plenty of room there because it's structured for buses.
Okay. Do you have lane markers for those porcelains to get, get to that number?
You would want to do, you know, you, you've got to be careful about that because you probably go to a different color. You might do white for the buses and-
Blue.
Maybe a red or blue for, for after-hours. It's got to be visible enough, but it doesn't want to get confusing. So we'll have to study that a little bit.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, if I could ask another question. Can you now go to the slide, I think that is one back, that talks about our existing So as, as it is now, we have something like 250 or so spaces back there, is that right?
Oh, between 70 to 80 and 89.
Right. So we're losing about 100 spaces to the rear of that structure. And I'm, I, I think we talked about it last time, but those, those fields that are behind that school, they play a really important role in our community for association sports, for youth sports, for our lacrosse team that are with through the schools, some of the other activities. I just have a concern that we seem to have stripped out a lot of parking area and relocated it to the front. And, and I appreciate the fact that you, you took Mr. Melton's suggestion and Ms. Emel's, I think, and you looked at some creative approaches to sort of use an alternative type of parking material to address some of that, but we've, we have substantively lost a lot of parking behind that building that, that is in use right now. Football games, lacrosse, those sorts of things, those parking areas are generally pretty full right now. And it just really sort of is going to make a real change for the community.
One thing that we're, we aren't sure of is that nothing's really striped back in this area. So we're, we're making some, some guesses as to how people are back there. My guess is they don't park as efficient as you could possibly do it if they were striped out, because it's really just a big asphalt sea, so people are going to park where they want to. So whether or not you really are getting A back there, I'm not sure, but-
And that's my concern now is that with, with the new proposed parking layout is that if it is laid out and striped for buses, I think that that sort of deters people from following the normal pattern for cars. So I think you're going to see people that are not parking very, in a very rigid way, side-by-side, back-to-back, nose-to-nose. And I think that functionally, we probably will wind up with less than 140 spaces is at least my belief. So I'm just concerned about how that's going to work when we have association sports and things where we've sort of consciously moved all the parking to the front of these buildings. And I don't know that you can answer that for me right now, but I just, I, I think that that is something that we need to at least be aware of. That's what we're doing. I mean, we're moving all the parking pretty well to the front of these buildings, and that's going to have an impact on our community when we talk about all of the association sports, all of the activities that take place behind that building right now, and it is an important element in our community.
I agree with you, Mr. Walters. That's why I had brought up about it too. You said last time that we had the same amount as we do now?
Well, plus, plus the 50 overflow, so we added 50 spaces.
You've added 50 spaces in the back?
No, in the whole complex.
In the whole thing, yeah.
You've added 50 with the alternative parking material-
Parking.
Correct. Which will look kind of like grass, I assume, but it will be suitable to park vehicles on? Okay.
One of, one of the things that, can you go forward one more slide, Mr. Westmoreland? One of the things that, and again, this is, this is something that we can certainly look at, but one of the things that I think bears mentioning is, is that with the budget that we had to work with, we were able to accomplish redesigning the site for both the elementary school and the middle school. And adding more parking, we have to be cognizant of budgetary impact and weighing that against the need that is there. But we can certainly look at the parking lot that's on the far left-hand side of that slide and look at expanding that and providing some more parking there and running some numbers to see what that would cost.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I'm very sympathetic to that, and after touring the transportation building, I think we've, we've got to figure that we're going to get 30 or 40 years out of this as it stands. I'm just suggesting that this, this piece of it, we need to be very conscious of because it will be something we're going to live with for a very long time. That's, that's my only suggestion. But as far as the structure, I cannot begin to tell you how excited I am by the diagrams that I see up there for that building, and in my opinion, it is long overdue. Thank you.
Mr. Walters, I, I think if, if you're there on the weekends with your family, I, I see what you're saying, and it's very, very important. Traditionally, our county has lacked parking spaces at our schools. And if we need to ask for more money for, from the county for parking because it's going to be a community building, a community area, then maybe that's what we need to do. Because we certainly don't want to have this beautiful school built and not have enough parking to be able to use the facilities either outside or inside the building.
I don't want to be, appear to be unsympathetic about the parking, but my concern is that we get to build and build on the budget and on budget. And, you know, if he's talking, if we're talking $60,000 more dollars that we don't have in that budget right now to build extra parking, then, you know, then I'm with Ms. Emel that we need to go to the community and say that they want the parking, then, then they come up with the $60,000. I don't think that's our mandate. I think our mandate is to build the best building we can with the money we have, and I would not want to shortchange one single student in that building to build 50 more parking places.
Mr. Chairman.
And, and, and I, you know, so the parking there, you know, having lived with that parking for several years while I was there, we never got that number of cars in the space that you have as your maximum. And it just never happened because people didn't park the way that, that they could have parked most effectively. And I don't, you know, you're going to move the parking from the back of the building to the front of the building? That's not a huge issue, in my opinion. I think we can handle that. I think our community can handle that. You know, I know that you're, you're also dealing with wastewater runoff here, and if we increase asphalt parking at all, we have to go back and redo that, which is, which I assume would be a considerable cost. You know, I like the design, you know, and I'd like to give it a shot the way, you know, my opinion is, let's give it a shot the way it is. Get the pricing, see if we can do it eventually. If we can do it, that's fine, but if not, you know, let's, you know, I like, I like the design the way it is, not that you can't massage it and do some things as you go forward, but I really appreciate what, you know, the whole layout of, you know, it's such an improvement over what we, what we have right now in, in so many ways. We're trading some, we may be trading the location of some parking, but we think what we're gaining in terms of the access to and from that building in the front and separating out buses from, from, from people, from parent drop-off, that's a huge, huge piece that we've accomplished with this. And I commend our staff for thinking about that and putting that together when they, when they did this.
Mr. Chairman, if I could-
Sure.
I'll just say that I'm not in any way suggesting we take a single dollar out of any classroom to do anything differently. Please don't misunderstand that. That is not what I'm suggesting. I'm simply suggesting that now in the planning phase, when we're sitting around the table talking about how this should be laid out, now is the time to have the conversation about how do we best use the parking area that we have available? Because again, I agree with you. I, I don't have any, I don't want to have to go back to the Board of Supervisors and suggest that after we built this, that we really needed more spaces for parking and have to go back and ask for more money. I just suggest that we try to get this as right the best we can before we move forward, and if we ultimately decide this is the best we can do, so be it. But I think it's important that we have this discussion because, again, you know, when you're involved in projects like this, as you move forward, you really only get one opportunity to get this right. And that's all the discussion that I think we need to have is, is this what's best for our county? But as far as the building, it's wonderful. As you walk through that junior high complex right now, Mr. Tibbs, I would suggest, would probably be absolutely delighted to turn the key tomorrow and open that building, and I would be thrilled for him because that is a wonderful complex. I just think we need to have the discussions about it. And frankly, I appreciate, from the last meeting we had, you addressed the issue about the ingress and egress to those two parking lots, and that was exactly the kind of conversation that we needed to have before it was built and then go back and try later on to decide, how are we now going to control parking when we have that first crash and we can't get anybody out of the parking lot? So thank you for doing that. But again, I think that it's productive to have these kind of conversations. But thank you for what you've done, and again, you know, Mr. Tibbs, I would suggest, I'd be happy to open the door with you because it would be very nice to have that today. Thank you.
And could we also include Dr. Prince too?
Sure. The more the merrier.
Any other questions, Arman?
Mr. Chairman, just one comment. One of the things that we've discussed previously, and we can certainly explore this option, is we'll go ahead and look at what it would cost to add more parking, and as we continue design development and get some better numbers, it may be within budget. If it's not, we could always add it as an ad alternate as part of the bid process, and if there is money, if the bids come in lower than anticipated and we have that money available, then it certainly- then it's certainly an option for us that we could do. So we can look at doing that and we'll have further discussions about that. What you're approving tonight is the basic approval of the schematics of the building itself.
Just the building?
Right. And the general layout, but we can still make modifications to it and will continue to make modifications to the site plan if needed.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I guess the only thing that I would add is, the building has an initial capacity of 1,000, but a core, an ultimate capacity of 1,200. I guess I would ask that the amount of parking that you have from the get-go be enough to accommodate the building in its maxed-out state. And that way, that way you're not looking at adding parking down the road if we, and I think it's gonna be a matter of when we have to take the building up to 1,200 students.
We, well, and the capacity of the building's 1,200. So that's the, and we have more than enough parking for that regular school day for 1,200 students or even 1,500 students. So, but we hear and have been listening that there is a concern about the amount of parking for after-school events, and we'll continue to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I, are we still on this? Oh, did you finish? I'm sorry. I wanted to thank you, Dr. Jones, for the joint meeting. I was at the middle school PTO meeting last week. And they were very excited that you had met with them and with the junior high, the current junior high's PTO about getting a room for them and helping them with that endeavor. These are the kinds of things that I like to see ahead of time so that when the building is open, we don't go back and say, oh, we wish we had. And, you know, it's just, thank you for being proactive and working with them and helping them with their needs. They were also talking and were interested in knowing about the courtyard, if there were any plans for that yet or...
Mr. Westmoreland?
Yeah, I think what you saw in the imagery, probably more so in the animations, we don't have still that.
It's just a yes. Right, that was the circular, right.
Yes.
So is there space in there for, you know, the, I don't know if we want to say furniture, but like, are we doing cement benches as well? Or is, they may be interested if there's extra money from their end of the year of helping out in that regard.
That's a good shot of it, there's a still. So you can see the areas of, uh...
And we may not want to have as much landscaping in case we want an outdoor classroom sitting there too, because then we'd have to come back and take all that beautiful landscaping.
And we haven't discussed the courtyard very much. We'll continue, but certainly...
Will you keep that in mind?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Any other questions for Mr. Westmoreland, Mr. Halsey?
We've still got a couple of things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Budget, which kind of was a good segue when we started talking about extra parking lots. We are on our budget. Now, I do want to make a clarification because I got some really raised eyebrows in the joint meeting when I made the statement that we could handle the water at the high school within our existing CIP. But I hope everybody remembers the second part of that statement, which was, we're gonna have to go into our budget and grab some money from other areas. Now, how we're gonna do that, I can say we've been extremely diligent at keeping this plan at 142,000 square feet. And Dr. Jones has been very instrumental as well as others participating, knowing that if someone wants more square foot in their classroom or their space, it has to come from somewhere else. We can't just keep piling on more square footage. So 142,000 square feet is exactly what we're on, and that's what the budget was based on. Some of that is renovation and some of that's new construction. And so our construction number, we feel like, is in very good shape. And when you look down on miscellaneous owner costs of almost $4.8 million, that's a big number. That's architectural fees, but it's also permitting fees, it's construction testing, it's all those things that need to happen. There are three major numbers within that number that are somewhat variable. There's a $400,000 furniture allowance, there's a $600,000 technology allowance, and there's about 1.4 million in contingency, which is about 5% of the construction value. Now, in order to come up with magically $750,000, we had 200,000 in there for fire pump and domestic water pump to deal with pressure issues. So we were about $550,000 short. Right now, today, that would come from one of those three categories. So, you know, we don't want to cut our furniture short, we don't want to cut our technology short. And we need that contingency because we are doing some renovation and we're gonna have some unknowns. We also don't exactly know what the bids are gonna be opened at on bid day. You know, that can fluctuate certainly on bid day. So, again, that was the caveat of, you know, I would hope the school board continues to pursue with the Board of Supervisors that additional funding for that unknown water issue, which is an off-site issue, rather than just say, hey, we have enough money, we don't need anymore. You really do, because we need to backfeed those other categories. Does that make sense? Or you have any questions about that? Just in terms of next steps, we're moving forward as we talked about with our third round of user meetings, and we'll be with your approval tonight. We'll be headed into design development, which just gets to more detailed design in terms of building systems, in terms of casework layout, in terms of all those details from a design standpoint. And we'll be pushing forward very quickly. We're looking at March concluding that design development, which will be also the conclusion of the site development package, which then goes to the county and VDOT for the beginning of a site plan review is a rather lengthy process with stormwater and traffic and those sort of things. And then bidding awards sometime in July and August, September, begin construction. And a school opening, now we've got two dates listed, and we talked about a January opening, which may very well be contingent on the direction of the water. Particularly if we go with the big tank, a January opening, unless we're at the short end of the timetable that Mr. Rao Timmons was talking about, it probably is going to push that opening to September with the big tank. With the little tank, we can make that January opening. So that's why we've listed both of those as possibility. And I know school folks always kind of are not real happy with the mid-year move anyway, so that's really an option that you have. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
I'm sure in this case, though, the people of this county would be excited to move, you know, whenever we can, you know?
Well, and I think the way that you're doing the transition really makes that easy because you're not bringing kids out of all the schools into this. You're literally bringing them across the street. So that would make it easier than normal.
Mr. Chairman, I just one question. Any original timeline we had, we were gonna bid earlier and try to start construction July 1. Can you take me through the rationale behind pushing it back three months to...
July, excuse me. I think we're pushing as fast as we can go. I think the water is the one thing that's got to, that's slowed us down a little bit. But we're pushing as fast as we can push.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move into our recognition portion of the presentation of the meeting. We do have a presentation in recognition of Career and Technical Education Month. I'm gonna ask Mr. Tibbs to come up. We've got a short video on Career and Technical Education Month, and then we're gonna recognize some of our outstanding teachers, students, and school board members. Mr. Tibbs?
Good evening. In the state of Virginia, the governor recognizes February as CTE month, and that is an annual occurrence. And so this year, we have worked very closely, the junior high and the high school have worked very closely to create a video that we want to post on our website. We will follow up with this video with some subsequent videos from the staffs of all of those program areas to highlight what's going on in CTE and to pretty much market what is taking place within the program areas to provide more of an opportunity for parents and for students in the community to see what CTE is about.
Powhatan County Public Schools Career and Technical Education serves over 2,250 students each year in grades seven through 12. Program areas include agricultural education, technology education, business and information technology, military science, trade and industrial education, family consumer sciences, and health and medical sciences. PCPSCTE supports career technical student organizations through an emphasis on co-curricular involvement and winning awards at the local, state, and national level. PCPSCTE prepares all students for life after high school in the world of work or post-secondary education. Students are provided with the opportunity to gain credentials and certifications in the program area upon completion. Come to us as we take a walk through what CTE has to offer in Powhatan County Public Schools.
You have the goats.
Are you done with the heat class?
Thank you. We'd like to recognize our CTE teachers tonight.
Can we hold on one second? Because we want to go down on the floor, but I think...
Yeah, I understand one of our student liaison is involved in the CTE and the Health Services program. Is that Mr. Hockaday? Would you care to comment on how that's helping, how that's working out for you?
The Health Occupants Health Assistant Class has actually, it's inspired me honestly to do what I want to do in college. I'd like to pursue a PA program at James Madison this fall. We've been to a lot of clinicals, both inpatient and outpatient facilities. They've taught me a lot about the field as well as what I like to do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hockaday.
All right, representing our CTE staff at Powhatan Junior High School, Betsy Lewis. Ms. Debbie Myers. Ms. Debbie Packard. Ms. Lisa Too. And Ms. Jennifer Bowery. Our Powhatan High School CTE staff, Ms. Kayla Seawick. Mr. Matt Lamott. Mr. Mark Robertson. Mr. Steve Passy. Mrs. Pat Butler. Mrs. Sue Farrell. Ms. Pat Orange. Mrs. Sharon Shadrack. Mrs. Jane Brown. Ms. Caitlin Smith. Mr. Wade Turner. Ms. Shanae Norman. Ms. Phyllis Gilmer. Ms. Phyllis Epps. Ms. Veronica Baker. Colonel. And Mr. Michael Payne. Thank you all. Thank you all.
School Board members and Dr. Jones, we also want to recognize at our February meeting the 2016 PCPS Birthday Card Artwork Winners. Each year we have a competition to choose artwork from our students' work to put on the front of employees' birthday cards that Dr. Jones sends to all of the employees and everybody loves. This year, we have Kendall Utte from Pocahontas Elementary School, a first grader. We also have Taylor Harper from Powhatan Elementary School in the second grade. Ella Taylor from Flat Rock Elementary School, also in the second grade. Peyton Baker from Pocahontas Middle School in the sixth grade. And Bailey Nunnally from Powhatan High School in the 11th grade.
If I could, I'd also like to thank all the art teachers who I know put in some time to do this, and I appreciate them making time for it. Any art teachers, Miss Harrison there? Any of the staff? Yep.
That'd be great, yes. Okay, let's give them a hand again once again. February is also School Board Appreciation Month, and that is a wonderful thing. It marks the annual observance of appreciating the time to salute the work of school board members and to celebrate the public education that they work for. This year's theme, Turning Vision into Results, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. The month-long observance is an opportunity for the school division and the community to build a stronger understanding of the crucial role school boards assume in a representative democracy. School boards voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing multimillion-dollar public school divisions while preserving the core of our democratic values. Too often, we neglect to recognize the dedication and hard work of these men and women. Please let them know that you appreciate what they do for our students in Powhatan County. And now, let's hear what they have been doing for us and for how long. We have Mrs. Valerie Ayers, District Three Representative, and she's been serving since January 1996, 21 years. We have Mr. James Conca, District Two Representative, serving since February 2011, six years. Mr. Richard Cole, District One Representative, serving since January 2012, five years. Ms. Kim Emel, District Five Representative, serving since February 2014, three years. And Mr. Joe Walters, District Four Representative, serving since January 2016, working on his first year. We have one more special recognition. The Virginia School Boards Association Board of Directors has designated their third week in February as V S B A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week with a goal of building awareness of the role board clerks play in assisting school board members, superintendents, and our local schools. And tonight, we want to thank Michelle Wilson, who's been School Board Clerk from 2008 until the present, nine years.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, we are looking for approval of the consent agenda this evening.
All right, can I get a motion on the approval for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
First on the superintendent's report is to consider approval of the School Board Code of Conduct. We discussed this code of conduct at a previous meeting. The document has been circulated, and we've reviewed it, and we're looking for approval and signatures on that code of conduct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the School Board Code of Conduct. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is to consider approval for some retroactive revisions to the 2015-2016 Division Calendar. If you recall, with the blizzard that we had, we changed one day to a full day for the high school, and the Friday was changed to a full day for students and staff. We need to reflect that on the calendar.
All right, for revisions to the 2015-2016 Division Calendar, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is to consider approval for schematic design for the middle school. Just had the presentation. As we discussed, this design process will continue. The schematic design really is an approval to move forward with the building design as seen, and certainly, we will take feedback from the board into account in continuing that development work as we move forward.
Okay, for approval of the schematic design, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the schematic design with the qualifiers that Dr. Jones offered, and I'm excited to make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next is to consider approval for our Head Start Interagency Annual Agreement. We have Powhatan Elementary is where the Head Start classrooms are housed. This is run by the City of Richmond as part of a regional consortium. This is actually the agreement from 2015 to 2016 for the current year that we're in. We will be looking at if we move forward with closing the junior high school and moving fifth grade back to the elementary. We will be looking at moving those Head Start classrooms to Pocahontas Elementary. Both principals and the buildings are aware of that, but what we're looking at now is approving an agreement that we just got from the City of Richmond for this year.
Okay. So for the Head Start Interagency Annual Agreement, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Dr. Jones, we did add that Agenda Item 6E.
Correct.
The advisory committee positions were voted on and divided up amongst the board members, and when District Four member Sammy Frame elected to not run, we do have those positions officially open, and Mr. Walters has said that he would accept those positions, so we just need a motion to assign those positions to Mr. Walters.
I'll make that motion and thank him very much for taking on that responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Absolutely happy to do so, and I'll second the motion if it's proper.
No problem, no problem. Motion is put forward and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. I don't even know what you agreed to, but...
He has agreed to be on the Board of the Mass Science Innovation Center, and I believe the C I A C Committee, Special Education Advisory Committee.
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
Congratulations, thank you. That brings us all the way to next steps and follow-up. So, we didn't have a next steps, follow-up for the workshop. This will serve us for both, and I'll start first with Mr. Hockaday. If he has anything from the student body or that he wants to, the school board to look at, I'll give him the opportunity to say it now.
No items for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hockaday. Mr. Walters?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple things. During the snow we recently had, I was contacted by two families, one of whom is an employee of the school system, and they asked if I would bring the issue to the board, that they said we don't have a Facebook page, whereas Chesterfield, Henrico, Goochland, Richmond City, Amelia, Buckingham, and I think the list goes on, those counties do. And they asked if I would bring it to the board and ask if we would explore that possibility. I know that we use Twitter and some other things, but if we could do that. The next thing that I had was the broadband initiative. I know that the county is pursuing that, and I think it's critical that we play an active role in that. Thank you for attending the meetings. I wanted to say that publicly. I know that you've played an active role in it, and I would just ask that anything that this board can do to support that, I would personally be happy to do that, and I suspect the board would as well. I think that's important in our community. And the final point I have is, I would just like to say that I'm very pleased that we have our student representatives here on the board. I think that that's a great demonstration to them about what this is about. I would suggest that perhaps we spend some time in a workshop or in some setting formalizing what their role is and providing something in our policy to give them some guidance on sort of what our expectations are for them. I know we've talked about it a little bit, but I don't know that we've actually memorialized that, and I think that that would be to their benefit to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ayers, next steps and follow-up items?
Yes, first of all, and I'm so sorry that I keep, I forget to call you during the month to, just to bring back the board's self-evaluation, perhaps with the V S B A and maybe us working on a date that we can do that, whenever we can do that. I just keep forgetting during the month.
That'll be on next month's agenda.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you so much. And the other thing that I would like to ask is, the students that did the beautiful cards tonight, would it be possible that the board members could either purchase or be given a set of those cards? So, because when I write notes to Board of Supervisors or community members, I would love to be able to use those to write notes for...
Oh, great idea, Mrs. Ayers.
Yeah, and we run those cards in-house. We don't get them printed outside, so we can certainly run those and just leave the inside blank instead of the birthday message, and then you can include whatever message you'd like to.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
That is amazing artwork, just adding comments.
It really is. They are just incredible.
Thank you, Ms.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ayers. Ms. Emel, next steps and follow-up items?
I wanted to find out where we were with getting the checkbook online, the new software that I had spoken to you about putting, so we can get more transparency for our bills and receipts.
Yeah, Ms. Emel had shared with me a program that Goochland County uses and asked me to reach out to the superintendent there and get his opinion on that software. I did have that conversation with him, Ms. Emel. He cautioned us about moving forward with that software. They have had to devote a great deal of time and hire a staff member to manage that software, and so he asked us about our level of staffing, and I told him we have one person in our finance department with some additional help. So, that was the initial conversation that we had, but I'm happy to continue exploring that. He did say that it costs somewhere between $3,000 and $5,000 a year to get that software, so we can continue to look at that if it's the will of the board.
Well, the school board members are the ones that, of Goochland County, that are, said that yes, it did take a lot of effort at the beginning, but that they were very pleased with it and because it only cost $3,000 to $6,000. So, if we could pursue that or if we need to talk to the Board of Supervisors about what we had talked about getting us a new system altogether, which costs a lot more. So, I really would like to see more transparency there, and I would like to know if the rest of the board would like to go ahead with that to have him pursue that.
I don't know enough about it to comment on it. I think that we would need to...
If you bring some information back to the workshop, and then we can make a, take a poll on how we feel about that.
I would follow that. I'd like to know more about it. I don't want to hire someone to run this, but at the same time, I don't know that we have to hire someone. I would like to know more, I think.
Well, I guess my thought, not necessarily this, but a solution to getting it more transparent, whether it be this software or a new program, or I believe Mr. Cole mentioned about categorizing the bills and receipts. So, maybe the topic should be just the whole thing in general.
Well, it sounds like we've got consensus to move forward with that as an agenda item to look at some different options for increasing the public's understanding of checks and registers and access to that, so we'll certainly do that and look at the option that you brought forward from our neighbors as one of those possibilities.
Thank you.
Explain what we have versus what this would give us in that session.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, just have an intelligent conversation.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emel.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cole, just a couple of quick things. We just had the first real budget presentation tonight, and I know we posted on our website, but anything we can do to highlight that so that people might see it a little more readily? You know, I think Ms. Emel has a good point about transparency, but, you know, obviously, I'd like to make the checkbook more transparent, but at the same time, I'd like for people to be more aware of the budget process and more aware of how that goes together and what's in that budget and why it's important. So, anything we can do there. And then, I had one question as we got into the third day of our snow emergency, which most people seem to enjoy.
most people seem to enjoy pretty much, but a few years ago, we looked at snow emergency routes, and I don't know that there's any sentiment to that at all, but someone asked me, and I said I would at least mention it, you know, and maybe just, Dr. Jones, you can just kind of see how they go in other divisions, and if there's anything we need to talk about, do that. But I remember the last time we did it, that most parents were not happy with it and didn't want us to do it, so I've done my due diligence and...
Well, I mean, I can address that, because a couple of years ago, when we missed a bunch of days, we did investigate that and look at that, and what we found is that, given the nature of our county and our roads, there's not a safe, what you do with a snow route is you put a bunch of kids at one stop, and it needs to be somewhere near a primary road, and we just didn't feel like in exploring it, it was going to be safe for our students to look at that, so...
That's what I related.
I'll put that on the record, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I had just a couple of things. Back when I first became a board member, I remember sitting in on a fairly brief but very informative orientation session from our legal counsel, just talking about the responsibilities of a board member. I don't know if we're still doing that, or, but I think it was very beneficial, and, you know, for Mr. Walters or even Ms. Emo, if they haven't had an opportunity to, you know, have that sit-down session, it's something I would recommend. And then, Mr. Cole brought something up that I had gotten a couple of questions, heard some rumblings about, but when there is a state of emergency in, you know, in the state of Virginia, you know, our employees, I'm assuming we can direct our employees to come in and do whatever is necessary, but since we're outsourcing all of our, you know, building upkeep to service solutions, you know, the question was raised was, you know, how can we tell them they've got to come in during a state of emergency? And I guess from a contractual standpoint or a legal standpoint, I just want to make sure we're covered as to what we, what our expectations of them are, and what they, you know, feel they're obligated to provide during those situations. That was all I had. And that brings us to comments by the board. I'll once again go back to Mr. Hockday. Any parting comments that you have for this session?
No comments.
Nothing? Okay, we're going to get you to engage more as we go here, you know, so get used to the back and forth. Okay, Mr. Walters?
Yep, I just have a couple, and I'll be brief. Dr. Jones, that was an excellent presentation, thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
I made a couple of notes while you were doing your presentation. All of our schools are fully accredited by the Virginia Department of Education for 2015-2016. Our AP program was just recognized at the General Assembly. We had our $10,000 award for Hours of Code, which my youngest son loved.
Good.
And I will tell you, thank you, Dr. Prince, wherever you are. That was a wonderful program. That didn't happen because we have great buildings. It didn't happen because we have lots of nice school buses. It happened because of the men and women that are sitting in this room, who are our teachers, our staff, our administration, our faculty. You did that. Thank you for what you do. And tonight, we talked about a pay raise for you. That's important. Thank you for what you do. So, I just wanted to say that to you right now. As we move through this process, it's important. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Ms. Ayers?
Just real quickly, just to comment on the plan for the new school. How exciting is it? Every time they're here, every time I see a picture or a video, it is so exciting. I mean, this is something we've wanted for so, or needed, I don't want to say want, because it's a need, it's absolutely a need, and something we've needed for so long with the joint transportation facility, and I am just, I couldn't be happier with the progress that we're making, and thank you, Dr. Jones, for your help in that. And just to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Wilson, I know that you did a lot during the snow, and your people did, and thank you so much, because I know that that takes you out into, out of the comfort of your home with your wife and family, and so, thank you for your, for what you do. And Michelle Wilson, where did Michelle go? Just to thank her and tell her, I thank her all the time, but she really is, I don't know how this board would survive without her. She is amazing, she goes above and beyond, and just want to take an opportunity to thank her for what she does.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Ms. Emo?
Let's see, I first wanted to thank my colleagues on this board for participating in our first, well, the first-ever participation, and Dr. Jones with the Martin Luther King Community Youth Breakfast. I know I publicly said that at our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, but I wanted to be sure to say it, because some of the people here and those that are listening might not have known. It was the first-ever participation, and I appreciate Dr. Jones' openness to this event, and want to thank the high school jazz band for participating, the junior high chorus, also, Mr. Sneed for being the keynote speaker, and the many students who served as hosts and hostesses. And I'm hoping, I guess I should have said this during the follow-up, I'm not so sure, Mr. Chairman, about, if possible, a school board resolution that we could include next year in the program as the declaring it the day and how we support it as a board, as the schools. I took a visit down to the General Assembly and saw the House Education Subcommittee on Elementary and Secondary Education. They were meeting, and then I was able to see the full House of Delegates in session. I sat with our delegate Ware, and I wanted to say that my, the highlight of my visit was seeing one of our own Powhatan Junior High School students there, an eighth grader, Dylan O'Quinn. He was chosen by the Speaker of the House to serve as a page in the House of Delegates this session, and I just thought that was a very wonderful, fabulous opportunity that he has. Ms. Peggy Martin at the Powhatan Library asked me if I would say something about the Mini Maker Workshop coming February 27th, a Saturday, at the Powhatan Library from 10:00 to 2:00. I believe it's on our website, I've seen it somewhere, okay, it is there?
Yes, it is. It's on our parent site, community site.
Right, and it sounds like a great event. And then, the last thing, the watchdogs program at Pocahontas Elementary, I wanted to thank Ms. Jenkins, the school counselor there. The cafeteria was packed, I'm sure, oh, it was, there was a picture inside the principal reports of it. That was a real positive there. And then, at Pocahontas Middle School, they started the All Pro Dads, and I wanted to thank Ms. Zelnick and Ms. Remy for doing that. And if I could, just one personal, quick story, their topic was on decisions, and it was in the morning, and so, my husband had gone with my son, and then he came back, and he said to me that one of the activities was about five or 10 minutes when you talk to your child about making decisions. And so, he was so proud of himself. He turned to me and he said, "You know what I told our son?" I said, "What?" He said, "I told our son that the best decision I've ever made was to marry your mother, because now I have you." And so, I encourage some of the other mothers to do what I did, and just sign your husbands up, sign your dads up, and you may get a nice compliment like that as well.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I was going to say, it wasn't even Valentine's Day yet.
Giving some credit there.
Thank you, Ms. Emo.
Mr. Cole? You know, I just want to follow up on a couple of things that other people have already said. First, Ms. Emo up there, you know, with the Black History Month, Martin Luther King Day presentation a couple of weeks ago, she did a great job, and Ms. Ayers has already noted that at another meeting, but I wanted to second that and say, you know, we thank you for stepping up there and helping with that event and kind of representing the board unofficially. We really do appreciate that, and we are looking forward to working more with that in the future. To your C T E teachers and to Mr. Tibbs, thank you for that presentation. You know, I think that sometimes we don't appreciate the great opportunities that our students have in our division. We can't do everything, but what we do, we do very well, and I really appreciate the staff's effort for what they do, and helping our students learn hand-on activities and apply those academic skills in a way that we can't not always do in the academic classroom. All the activities that, at both the middle school and Pocahontas Elementary School, that encourage dads to be involved in their education, I applaud, and I'm not going to belabor that point, but anytime you can get a dad in a building is a good thing, and all the encouragement that we, that you gave is very much appreciated and very much needed. And then, to our staff and Dr. Jones, you know, on the snow days, you guys did a great job handling that. I thought the notice was timely, you know, I think we put safety first, and I certainly, you know, congratulations to you on handling it, it's not always easy, and lots of times, no matter what decision you make, somebody thinks it's not the right decision, but I think the decisions we made those days were appropriate, and thank you for them.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I echo what our fellow board members have said. Thank you, Mr. Tibbs, for the presentation on C T E, and I want to thank all our young artists who represent Powhatan County and the fine artwork they've done for the birthday cards. I want to thank both of our student liaison, Mr. Hockday, Mr. Milkerick, for their continued participation in helping us keep the pulse of, you know, the student community. I want to thank Mosley Architects for their update on the middle school. It's very exciting to be moving forward with that project. I was, you know, a little personally excited that, hey, I'm going to have my name on a plaque in the building, until I realized that Ms. Ayers has her name on, like, every building, so... But anyway, so that's all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is February, and in addition to C T E Month, which we certainly recognize and value our wonderful C T E programs, it is Black History Month. We have a lot of wonderful programs going on at our schools. We have some of those listed on the website, we're going to pin all of those at the front page of our website, so we encourage as many people as possible to attend some of the various programs that are going on at the school to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans to our community and our country at large. I also want to thank Mr. Wilson and his staff, the maintenance staff that were out starting Sunday, when the storm had just blown over, plowing parking lots and sidewalks, and it was arduous work. I made a couple of visits there to lend moral support, I didn't do much work, but to at least let them know I was behind them, and, but they did a great job, and there are a lot of counties that spend a lot of money outsourcing that and paying to have somebody come and do it, but we're fortunate that we've got a hard-working staff that does that. Also, want to recognize our transportation staff supervised by Mr. Johns and Chris Gualtney directly. They're out early, early in the mornings checking roads, anytime there's a chance of any snow or ice, and always give us good advice that protects the safety of our students and makes sure that we can go to school, so thank them for that as well. And I believe that is all that I have. Hopefully, we won't get any more snow.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. That brings us to a second public comment period. We have a time limit of one minute per individual, three minutes per group. If you do approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Sandy Brendley, 2005, Valley Springs Circle. I just wanted to thank Dr. Jones. I asked to meet with him about the school, and I'm speaking kind of, I think, okay, officially as the P T O president at the middle school. But I asked him to meet with Stephanie Douglas and I, the P T O president at the junior high, and we had such a great meeting. I asked him if there was going to be space for the P T O, because if you're not aware, the P T Os raise between $15,000 to $20,000 at each school for, to put back into our classrooms, and we try to make sure that every penny goes to support our teachers and our students. By the time we got to the meeting, he had worked out an area for us. We are thrilled, I mean, just beyond thrilled about the plans for our space. I just want to thank you, I want to thank all of you for the hard work you're doing, having sat on the planning commission that started this whole thing off. It's very exciting to see it go on. I'm sorry, I know I'm a little over time, but I did want to do two more things. I wanted to invite you all to our P T O meetings. I know I've sent you all some emails, especially as we go through these next few months with everything that's going on, and I will send you another update of those times and dates. I also want to invite you all, this might be a great time on Thursday with the parent-teacher conferences. The P T O is hosting a dinner, we're doing crock pot soups and salads from 4:30 to 8:00 at the school in the library. I would love for the board members and Dr. Jones, for you all to, if you have the ability to come by, we're going to have it set up so that they have seating in the library and can sit down and take a break from parent-teacher conferences, but I know they would probably appreciate seeing any or all of you if you had a moment to come through, so... And I can't tell you that they'll all be in there at one time, they'll just be kind of filtering in, but I just wanted to extend that invitation on behalf of the P T O. I'm sorry I went over time, but thank you again for all you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Brendley.
Thank you, Mrs. Brendley.
Okay, seeing no further movement, I'll close the public comment period. And at this point, I'll take a motion for...
One more quick thing, I just want to remind the board and the community, there is a Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow, 6:00. It is not a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, but the Board of Supervisors will be getting information from some financial consultants about bonding and moving forward with the C I P, including the middle school that we saw and the joint transportation facility, so if you're interested in that, watch it live at home or come into the meeting and see it in person. It hopefully will be good news that we'll receive about the financial chances of moving forward quickly with both of the projects that affect the school system.
Thank you for that, Dr. Jones, I appreciate it. Okay, so I'll take a motion for adjourning.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.